Yeah, I'm ready. Just another point.
How's it going?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Whenever you're ready.
I'm ready.
This is a call to order for the December 12th, 2022 City of Canal Winchester Planning and Zoning Meeting. Time in is seven o'clock. Mr. Ritchie, please call the roll.
Mr. Donahue.
Here.
Mr. Willenthaler.
Here.
Mr. Ritchie.
Here.
Mr. Deeds.
Here.
Ms. McDonald.
Here.
Mr. Pausgrove.
Here.
Time in is seven o'clock. Now I need the approval of the minutes for the August 8th, 2022 meeting. So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Deeds, second by Ms. McDonald. Roll call, please.
Mr. Ritchie, yes. Mr. Willenthaler.
Yes.
Mr. Donahue.
Yes.
Ms. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Deeds.
Yes.
Mr. Pausgrove.
Yes.
Now it'll be time for public comment for items that are not related to our agenda. Seeing how there's nobody here from the public, I'll move to the public oath. So if you'll be speaking to us this evening, would you mind standing and taking an oath? Are you going to speak before us? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So please say I do. Thank you. I will now turn it over to staff for our first application.
Tonight's application is conditional use 22-003. Location is 695 West Waterloo Street, the existing Chipotle there in front of the Walmart Shopping Center. The request is a conditional use to Section 1167.03A to add a drive-through to the existing Chipotle restaurant. The subject parcel is zone general commercial, consists of 0.8 acres on the south side of West Waterloo Street. Surrounding properties are zone general commercial and contain a mix of retail uses, automotive service uses, and some undeveloped commercial land to the east of the subject parcel. The applicant is requesting a conditional use to add a drive-through window to the existing Chipotle restaurant. The existing building is 2,500 square feet. The applicant is proposing a 265-square-foot addition on the south side of the building to accommodate the new pickup window. The site plan is being redesigned to remove 11 parking stalls on the east side of the site, relocating the dumpster to fit the new drive-through stacking lane. And then the drive-through loop will wrap the north side of the building between the building and the sidewalk I see in this street photograph here. Chapter 1199.03 for the Commercial Development Standards notes that if a drive-through is deemed appropriate by the Planning and Zoning Commission, it should be an integral part of the structure it serves and that its features must design the building as well. The applicant, again, is requesting for this conditional use approval. They are seeking the drive-up window service for online orders to be picked up. This drive-through service does not have a menu board where you can sit and make your purchase app. The purchases are done ahead of time remotely, and you are going through the drive-through loop to just pick up your order at a time that the app or however you place your order notifies you it'll be ready for pickup. The site, as the applicant notes, is a general commercial. All surrounding properties in the general commercial zoning district have drive-through loops, whether they are for pickup or for traditional menu board ordering. The applicant did work with staff to redesign the traffic flow around the building to minimize its impact, and they note that because of the mobile system to order and the remote pickup, that there will be less traffic issues and noise associated with it. Up on the screen is a site plan showing the before and after conditions. On the left-hand side, you can see in the red the 11 parking stalls that are being removed from the eastern property line to accommodate the loop that is on the stacking for the loop that's on the right. The dumpsters being relocated to the southern side of the parking lot island to make room for the new building addition. The addition itself, if anybody's been to a Chipotle facility that has a drive-through pickup, they have a secondary kind of station to assemble your food there. So that's what the addition's for, is to have that assemblage and also the pickup window in that location. Looking at the loop itself here, you can see the loop is further back than the 15-foot front yard parking setback along West Waterloo Street. And then the applicant has provided a detail showing the dumpster enclosure will be the same, just be new construction in the relocated position. And then, working with the landscaping, the applicant has provided screening along the entirety of the drive-through loop, including the entire eastern property line between them and Panera, and then the northern property line to screen the drive-through loop from the right-of-way. This was something that the applicant worked with staff on because the existing Chipotle facility had an excess of landscaping that was being removed to do the integration of the new pavement. So staff advised to add landscaping in places that traditionally aren't required to try to help make up for some of that mature vegetation that's being lost. It's just something to try to help kind of keep the aesthetics of the facility intact. When looking at the proposed addition, the applicant is looking to match the brick that's on the building already. The addition here will have the drive-through pickup window with a canopy on the eastern side. The western side will have a new service door. The service door will be to go to the dumpster facility that's being relocated. There's a striping plan in the parking lot. It's not necessary to stripe that kind of dumpster path in there, but the applicant just wanted to show over their application how you get to the new dumpster location. When looking at the existing south elevation here on the bottom of the screen, the applicant is showing there was a window that was in this location. So they are adding a thinner window in their assembly line to try to mimic some of those features that are there. The building addition will not have as high of a roof height as the existing building. Instead, they're proposing to step it down and having a metal panel above it that will mimic the architectural detail for the patio in the front of the building there. So staff is recommending that the applicant's request for the conditional use for a drive-through be approved as presented. The redesign for the Chipotle site to incorporate the drive-through service has been designed to allow for a maximum amount of stacking internal to the site and reduce conflicts navigating around the site. This design is for dedicated pickup only and no orders are being placed, reducing the total service times. And the applicant did work to add additional landscaping as shown to screen the new drive-through loop. Any questions for me?
Questions for staff?
No.
Do you anticipate the loss of the 11 parking spots would create any issue?
So when I was working with the applicant on how to best put the drive-through loop in this facility, they were only showing one space that was being removed. And to do the loop around the building, you actually had to enter, if you can follow my mouse on the screen here, enter into the site, head towards the front door, and then loop around this way. And that was going to be their stacking was internal to the site. That internal stacking did not seem appropriate at all because you'd be actually blocking all the movement internal to the lot. So the best way to get the stacking to be intact was to eliminate these spaces here on this side. Now, this site was overparked when it was originally constructed. You can see here in the center of the screen that they had 42 parking stalls, and that zoning required only 28 to be in.
Oh, okay.
For the size of the building.
Okay.
So to make up for the additional parking stalls in our Commercial Development Standards, they added about 700 square feet of additional landscaping to do that. So as part of this, some of that landscaping's being removed, but then they don't need as much landscaping because the number of parking goes down. But they're strategically relocating it to screen basically all of the new pavement from any adjoining property.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
The exit from the drive-through lane appears, I mean, so normal traffic flow will be coming up to the building and you would be face-to-face. I'm surprised we wouldn't move that to the left or north more, if I get my directions right.
Yeah.
No, west more. I'm surprised we would move that west more so that it would come out with the natural flow of traffic heading out.
I think that's a very good comment. So after this review, we would do a, I told the applicant, I'm calling it a soft engineering review because they're adding some impervious, so I'll have to check stormwater. But that's something I'll relay to the engineering team.
I'm a little curious about the landscaping. If it's, just thinking of a typical drive-through lane and you get larger vehicles that go around the corners and stuff, you know, people might complain if they're running into the shrubs that you put in around there, maybe, I mean, if we're looking for more landscaping, maybe that's, there's another option. If you're trying to screen the drive-through, then maybe the materials you're picking is not going to grow as much, but I just, I have visions of...
Step it back from the...
I have visions of, yeah, tunnel and people are going to be scraping their vehicles and, or running over the plants.
Yeah, I think that's an easy one, too, Rick. We could push this landscaping out because they have over 15 feet to the property line.
Oh, cool.
So it could be a three-foot setback, kind of like what Panera has where there's a bigger mulch bed, but the plants are centered.
Any other questions for staff?
No.
Is the applicant present? Anything you wish to add?
Just here to answer any of your questions. Jordan Zikofus from Sandstacker on behalf of Chipotle.
I guess just, just kind of glancing at this, and I drove by, it was kind of dark. The patio, is that a, that's a sidewalk area? If you're at the patio, how do you get back to your car? Do you have to go through the building or is that...
There's a sidewalk in front of it.
So it's not really clear in this image, Mr. Deeds, but the patio actually extends underneath this projection portion. If you look at the street view here, that's kind of out in the elements while this is a patio, just has an architectural feature kind of covering three sides of it.
Got it.
The door to get inside of the building is kind of right there behind that pillar.
Any other questions for the staff? Comments?
Thank you, sir.
I will now open it up for the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, saying none, I move close.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Ritchie, second by Ms. McDonald. Roll call, please.
Mr. Ritchie, yes. Mr. Willenthaler.
Yes.
Mr. Donahue.
Yes.
Ms. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Deeds.
Yes.
Mr. Pausgrove.
Yes.
Motion for the conditional use.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve CU-22-003 as presented.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Willenthaler, second by Mr. Ritchie. Roll call.
Mr. Ritchie, yes. Mr. Willenthaler.
Yes.
Mr. Donahue.
Yes.
Ms. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Deeds.
Yes.
Mr. Pausgrove.
Yes.
Conditional use is passed. Thank you.
Hey, thanks, Andrew. The only other item on tonight's agenda for kind of old new business, the Assistant Law Director here is going to do a brief presentation on kind of new member training. I don't think we've had one in five years. And even though many of you have been on the commission for a while or in similar roles, we thought it was just a good time to tease Mr. Paul Gris here, who has done many years of public service, and make it act like it's just for him. So we'll kind of go through this brief presentation tonight, and feel free to ask kind of any questions that come up, if you guys have anything you want to...
And to clarify, this is the chair. This is on the record and we want to make this part of the meeting?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Absolutely. Yes, good evening, I'm Jesse Schamp. For those that we haven't met before, I know we haven't been together in quite a while since I've had to come down. Wanted to do a brief training tonight. We'll get you out of here shortly. As, after you hear this, think about what we talked about tonight. If you have any questions, don't hesitate to email either myself or Thad Boggs, who's the actual law director. Brief overview of our topics, I thought we'd run through open meetings, public records, Ohio ethics, and then sort of more specific to this body, the powers and duties that you are expected to perform. First off, even though you've been appointed and didn't run for office, you are a public official now. Congratulations. This is a public body, and because our zoning and planning for the city regulates private property, the Constitution requires that we give procedural due process to all. The Supreme Court has interpreted procedural due process to mean notice, which is why Andrew sends out information to everybody in the neighborhood when a decision's going to be made, and then a meaningful opportunity to be heard. So that's why we have open hearings where everyone has a chance to say their opinion. In open meetings, public bodies are required to take all official action and deliberate upon official business only in open meetings so that the public can attend and observe. A meeting is defined as a pre-arranged discussion of public business of the public body by a majority of its members. So if you happen to run into someone else on the commission out and about and talk about something, that is not a public meeting. You're permitted to do that. Only caveat to that is that if you happen to run into all five people at Meyer while you go down different aisles, you can't have sort of a piggyback meeting where you all come to a decision without all being together in one place. We maintain the minutes, that's why, these are all recorded, and then they're transcribed and open for public inspection. Public officials generally can't vote or count towards a quorum via online mechanisms like Skype. There was a provision in Ohio law that allowed it for some period of time, but it expired last summer. So unless the city at its next charter review commission decides it wants to adopt that, we're in person for now. Always be careful that any messages exchanged over the internet, and this is a common misconception, whether it be through a city email account or your private email account or private cellphone number, can become public records if you're talking about public business. So if you don't want the embarrassment of private messages coming out with the request for public messages done on your private devices, make sure to keep any discussion through your official email account. There are exceptions to the Open Meetings Act. Executive session, you have to make a motion. The public would be excluded or we would go into a different room. There's eight or nine provisions in the Ohio Revised Code that would allow us to go into executive session, typically in a P&amp;Z body. The only one I can think of that would really be relevant would be pending or imminent litigation. So if someone's planning to sue the commission for a decision we've made, we could talk about that in executive session and talk about our strategy. Of course, meetings always have to begin and end in open session, so once we adjourn to executive, even if it's the end of the meeting, we'll come back on the record briefly to go back into open meeting and then adjourn the whole body. Public records, they define record very broadly. Any document, device, or item regardless of physical characteristic created or received by or coming under the jurisdiction of any public office which documents the organization, functions, policies, decisions, procedures, operations, or other activities of the office. So you can see that is very, very broad. Courts have interpreted that very expansively. So the safe bet is you're creating a public record when you're talking about city business. That's how, you know, it's the general safest way to operate. Public record is a record kept by a public office, so that means it has to be in existence. The city doesn't have a duty to create records that don't exist. For example, if an applicant wants some type of compiled information about decisions that this body has made in the past, if we haven't created that document, we don't have a duty to do that. And of course, we have a record retention schedule, which is permitted by the Ohio Revised Code that allows us to periodically destroy old records. They are based on their content rather than their storage medium, so this again goes back to electronic messages, both through your city email address and your personal email or cellphone. Just because it's not written down on paper doesn't mean it's not a record. One exception to public records are sort of personal notes that you would take to organize your own thoughts. That would typically not be something you need to retain or produce to someone who's Here's a fun example from Cincinnati City Council that shows the pitfalls of talking through text messages. Cincinnati City Council has nine members. Five of them were in a group text message where they just routinely discussed city matters. Of course, five out of nine is a quorum. Criticized the mayor, appointed city manager, discussed pretty confidential financial arrangements for the new soccer stadium down there, and then denied a request to overturn all of those. They were then sued and lost. Well, the writing was on the door, they were going to lose, so they settled it for $101,000, 90,000 of which were costs and attorney's fees, a $10,000 forfeiture personally from one member of council who intentionally destroyed his text messages, and then $1,000 in damages payable to the person who had requested the records. And then all of the texts were released, so all of that confidential financial information, everything they wanted to say, everything they had said about the mayor, all went public. So always a good thing to avoid. Ethics laws, always feel free to contact either myself or Thad if you have a question about any potential conflict of interest issue. It's always better if we know in advance, we can get some informal advice from the Ohio Ethics Commission, we can review their opinions and let you know beforehand so we're not making a decision on the fly. Of course, if we all come to the decision that there is a conflict of interest, the safest bet there is to abstain completely from discussion and voting, so we would ask that you just get out and leave the room when that conflicted issue comes up on the agenda. Very generally, and like I said, every word in these sentences has a meaning that's been interpreted by the Ethics Commission, it does in different ways. So you can't participate in matters affecting personal interests of yourself, your family members, or business associates. You can't accept or solicit anything of value that could have a substantial improper influence on the performance of your duties. Now, to me, you know, that doesn't sound like a cup of coffee, but we have always just said that in the interest of keeping our noses clean, treat it as if a cup of coffee would suffice to bribe you, which, you know, I don't think that's the case, but just don't take anything from anybody. You can't accept or solicit outside compensation for the performance of public duties. The one exception to that is that if someone were to ask you to come to speak at a conference about Planning and Zoning Commission work, they could pay for your travel. Very specifically here for this commission in Canal Winchester, the city charter, Section 701 establishes the commission and the membership of seven. And then later on in the zoning code under Chapter 1139, it establishes the duties that you perform. Those include a mix of making recommendations to council and making your own final decisions, which would then be appealable to the Court of Common Pleas. There's a difference, you do two distinct roles. One is legislative and one is what we call quasi-judicial. Municipal bodies can play both of those. Legislative are creating laws, which means we're not subject to administrative appeal. And quasi-judicial is where you are applying the existing law. So this is typically where you hear an application, you have the seven or six criteria for whatever it may be. You sort of walk through those and say, this is why your application does or does not meet these criteria. That's quasi-judicial, you're sort of acting as if you were a judge, and that can be appealed administratively to the Franklin County Court of Common Pleas. Legislative roles are rezoning, PUD preliminary development plans, which are in effect a rezoning because they're very distinct units of zoning, and then final plats. And then quasi-judicial roles are your final development plans, conditional use reviews, variance reviews, that type of thing. There's a difference in how you can approach each of these different roles legislative. And certainly, it's certainly up to you if you want to engage in substantive conversations with residents, do your own independent research, and you certainly have more discretion in the legislative role as to what is a right policy choice. There may be criteria for recommendations set forth, but those are built to give wiggle room so long as you're able to justify your thoughts on the matter. In a quasi-judicial role, the decisions you make are based on documents that are submitted and testimony at the meeting. So those, that testimony is all given under oath, which we always have the chair do at the beginning of the meeting. They can offer documents to the record, staff report becomes a part of the record, and you're not really allowed to have substantive communication with any applicants outside of this open meeting. And those, of course, have, those decisions are based on standards set by ordinance. Administrative appeals, I mentioned, those are under Chapter 2506 of the Revised Code. Our main goal here, certainly as a law director, is to make sure there is not another evidentiary hearing at the Common Pleas Court level. So there's a few flaws that a body can create at this level that can then be exploited by applicants at Common Pleas Courts, so that they can have a whole new hearing, drag in witnesses. And so what we always want to make sure is everyone's sworn in, everyone has a chance to testify, all of the documents that they offer up are admitted to the record and considered, and then that your decisions are based on a criteria in the code. The only time a Common Pleas Court would overturn your decision, it's a very particular standard, your decision had to be unconstitutional, illegal, arbitrary, capricious, unreasonable, or unsupported by the preponderance of substantial, reliable, and probative evidence on the whole record. So what we want to make sure at this point at the commission is that we get the whole record on the record and that you've considered everything that anyone could say you ever needed to consider. So if they have anything they want to bring in, this is their time to do it. We'll absolutely listen to it and apply the criteria. We'd always hope that when you make your vote, when the roll call is being made, that you could list a few of the criteria as to which way you vote, your vote was based. That is a rock-solid way to guarantee, knock on wood, a win on appeal for us. If you have reasonable reason based under our criteria, a court's not going to disturb that.
Can I jump in a little faster?
Sure.
So back on that last bullet point you had on there on if you are planning to vote no on something and you feel very strongly on why you're voting no, just say briefly why you're voting no. If you just vote and just say no, then it leaves this whole open-ended discussion. We've had meetings where none of the commission says a word. You all know how you feel about it, you know, independently, and then you vote right after my staff report. That doesn't look good when he's trying to put together his findings of fact for city council to look at. It doesn't make it very substantiative to put information together. So just if you ever want to vote no for anything, just quickly say why. That's really all that it's asking, and I think it's something that is uncomfortable but is definitely, you know, necessary, so.
Yes, and if there's one thing we can guarantee, it's that if we don't give a reason, someone who's appealing and not happy with our decision will ascribe the worst possible motive for your decision. So it's always good to put something out there to counter that. We're, of course, a resource, Andrew, myself, Thad, Lucas, please call with any questions if you have legal questions. Once again, always easier to handle it in advance of the meeting. You know, I like to think I know some of this stuff, but I always want to double-check, and it's a lot easier to do that in my office on my computer than haphazardly on my phone in the middle of a meeting. So again, our concern is process, not outcome. It is up to you as the decision-makers to apply the criteria. We'll defend it either way. We just want to make sure that everybody knows why you made the decision that you did. And that's it. Any questions? That was a lot, I know. But you know, you know what you're doing, so this is a very good commission.
Well, thanks, guys. If you have any questions, like Jesse said, feel free to reach out to him. That is all I had for Old or New Business. We've been off for several months. I can't even imagine to tell you what has happened that you guys don't know about since September. You know, nothing that's groundbreaking that you guys didn't approve. If you have any questions, want to follow up with me at the end of the meeting, feel free, but I don't want to drag it out too late tonight since you need to get back in the swing of things, so.
You're not going to share our year-end review tonight like you have in years past?
You know, honestly, I don't even know. We only had three conditional uses this year by tonight's general members.
What a great year.
So now we have like 17 variances, and I don't, I can't think of one that got denied, so it's probably going to be really boring.
We'll review. See if we can fix it in '23.
Yeah, I'll see if I can put something together for January for you guys.
Do you want to give them a quick update on where we are on the master plan, the comprehensive plan?
Yes, thank you. So the community plan process, we had our public engagement in September. I always think it's the last time I saw you guys. The public engagement was held at BrewDog over three days. We basically went through a public review process on testing core value statements, taking a look at kind of generally how the public has a gut reaction towards development and... and kind of how people want to see development happen. That was a really good exercise to get people's conversations started about this plan. Since then, the steering committee has been working really hard with the consultants on testing that data further. In the last meeting, they just had, they looked at snapshots of development patterns from residential, multifamily, commercial, industrial, and basically looked at aerials for how development patterns look and street views for the same thing, and just gave a thumbs up or thumbs down or somewhere in between, basically to give the consultants a baseline of generally what the opinions of the community are. That will be further exploited by discussing what they gave thumbs up for, what the densities were, what the values are, cost of construction, basically putting a numerical value behind it all to make sure it's something that's achievable. And then they'll be wrapping up a market study that will say exactly how much commercial square feet is viable for the community in the next 10 years, how much industrial space can be viable. That will be tested not only from land that could fit it, from price per square foot to construct it, but also from like a job opportunity, if we build it, will people actually come to work here, sort of baselines. That data will then go to a future public outreach meeting to test putting those all on a map kind of where they go. Like, okay, the steering committee says we want more medium-density, three-story stuff. Where do we put it? You know, stuff like that to try to come up with the next stage for that plan process. I'd say we're right around the 50% mark right now. You know, once we have the data collection completed, we'll be at the 65, 70%. The next kind of public engagement session will get us to 75, or a really high confidence level. Surveys went out in the mail. I hope most, I hope at least 75% of you sitting here got one because we sent out 2,700 mailers out of the 3,400 residents in the city. We had 300 responses, so we had a 12% response rate. It seemed pretty good considering they went out at the same time as all the political attack mail. And with that response rate, I think we're at a 93% level of confidence on the survey results. So those will be also determined and further explored by the steering committee this Thursday. So there's, or next Thursday. So if there's any other questions on that, thanks for bringing that up. It's always something I think is just dragging out so long everybody knows what's going on, but it's nice to let the commission know. Hopefully you guys will be able to review a draft plan in May. I think that's our target.
Yeah. And I've been sitting on that committee. It's a really good committee and there's good discussion. So if there's ever a time that you'd like to look at some draft documents or kind of get a feeling for what direction they're heading, just let me know and I'll make sure you get all that stuff.
And everything's on the website, too. All the meetings are recorded, so you can watch a video of it. You get copies of everything that the committee gets, you're just getting it after they look at it. So that's all available as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
January meeting is?
January meeting will be on the night.
Mr. Chairman, move to close.
Second. Rule call.
Mr. Ritchie, yes. Mr. Willenthaler?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Ms. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Deeds?
Yes.
Mr. Pousgrove?
Yes.
Timeout, 7:33 PM.